Right, okay, well, John, just to explain to people, John's had a few technology problems over the last few days. So I'm assuming he's had a similar problem this evening. So I'm going to chair us until John arrives with us. So first off, it's great pleasure to introduce Mark Davis, who's the new chief executive of Lancaster City Council. Mark's been in post, I think now probably about a couple of months, Mark, is that be? About, right, okay. So what we're going to hand over to Mark in a moment, but basically Mark's going to sort of give us some views about his role as chief executive and issues for the city council and how they're going to move forward over coming months and years. And then once Mark's concluded, we're going to open it up for questions. And when do we get to the questions? But if people could indicate that they want to ask, we'll try and get around you in order and make sure we take everything. So Mark, I'm going to, I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to hand over to you now.
All right, thank you. So thank you as well for the invitation to speak tonight. Much appreciated. I had a, I had a meeting a few weeks back with James and David and they outlined the sort of aims and ambitions of Lancaster vision, which was really interesting. And it's kind of helped me think about how best to structure my presentation this evening. So by way of background, I've served as a chief professor at Lancaster City Council for over 20 years now in various roles. Previously, I was director of communities and environment. And I've had various roles before that to do with waste collection, street cleansing, those sort of frontline services. So I worked in Lancaster for about 20 years. At my entry point into local government, I started as a building cleaner. And I was previously self-employed, grounds maintenance contractor. And but then I took a job during the winter.
We've, we've lost your sound, Mark. Mark, you've gone, you've gone on mute, I'm afraid.
Okay.
I'll take you back, you're with us.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So yeah, so what, so at my entry point to local government as a building cleaner, I was motivated by realising that even though I was a small part in a big system, I could make a difference. So I didn't realise, I didn't sort of recognise myself actually as a cleaner. So as I was pulling blazes out of the fifth form toilets, I was kind of thinking about the fact that I was actually helping the education system in this case. I was part, I was a small part, a cog in a much bigger system. And even as a cleaner, I recognised that I could make a difference. And that satisfaction that I gain from working through systems to make things better is what's sort of driven me on through my career in local government. And obviously it's a great privilege to be chief executive of the Lancaster district. It's fair to say that just like the majority of the country, we are at a key juncture. There are many challenges. Communities are still very much affected by the pandemic. The infection rate itself is still relatively high, causing absences in workplaces. I think it's fair to say that the impact on younger people, the mental impact will be felt for many years yet. We've got the impact of climate change that is very visible, even in our district. We have economic uncertainty, you know, record inflation rates announced by the government today. Particularly the, the rises in heating and utility bills will have a significant impact on our communities. And that will just exacerbate the symptoms of inequality that we already see. So we have a situation that public services, like councils, like the police, like the NHS, et cetera, those services that our community rely upon are pressured like never before. As far as the city council goes, so Lancaster City Council, so we're not the only council in the area. We've got Lancashire County Council. We've got also some very active parish and town councils. But I think it's fair to say that we accept that as far as visibility, accessibility, accountability goes, most of our residents recognise Lancaster City Council as the community leader in this district. As a council, we have a plan called Plan 2030. And that seeks to address some of the issues that have described by setting four strategic priorities for the area. So the core Plan 2030 sets out these strategic priorities and helps to provide a structure for budget and prioritisation decisions. In outline, the four strategic priorities are one, a sustainable district, two, an inclusive and prosperous local economy, three, healthy and happy communities, and four, a cooperative, kind and responsible council. So there are these priorities our elected members have set and they've been agreed by the 60 members of our council. Each of the strategic priorities that I've outlined has got outcomes which vary in specificity. So there are some that are really specific, like under a sustainable district, we set a target for the council itself to be net zero carbon by 2030. Whereas there's some more general ones in an inclusive and prosperous local economy, which talk about regeneration, developing the economy. But there's 24 of those outcomes that are defined. And they help us start to sort of prioritise our resource decisions. The extent to which we can deliver on those outcomes and those 24 outcomes depends obviously on the funding that's available to us. So as I, as I mentioned, there are many challenges, but there are also many opportunities. So we have key projects like Canal Quarter, like South Lancaster, like Eden, like Frontierland that provide many opportunities. And I think it's fair to say that in Lancashire, there's quite a lot of envy directed towards the Lancaster district. Of all the big opportunities that exist in Lancashire, most of them are sort of centred around the Lancaster district. And the fact that we have two universities in the area, we've got Lancaster and Morecambe College. We've got a burgeoning elect tech sector, relatively speaking. We have a thriving city centre and Morecambe is, you know, very much a tourist destination once more. So we have many opportunities and we are, as I say, being looked upon with some envy, which is good. And we have the government's levelling up agenda, which provides opportunities at least to present an ambitious and cohesive vision for Lancashire and also provides an opportunity to bid for up to 50 million for the Eden project. So how we respond, and when I say we, I mean, I don't just mean the council. I mean, we, as in all of us, will define our area for generations to come. And as I said, we all have a part to play in that. And to try and illustrate the point, I'm quite fascinated by canals. So in the Netherlands, by 1860, the drainage network consisted of the equivalent of 33 Suez canals or the equivalent of a ship canal that's 40 foot deep, 200 feet wide and 5,000 miles long. And all of that was dug by hand. The point being that every single shovel fall made a difference. And why did that effort go into that? Well, the Netherlands obviously faced an existential threat. If that drainage system hadn't been dug, it would have disappeared into the North Sea. So an existential threat resulted in a practical solution that involved lots of different players. So we have, as we said, we have many challenges, we have many opportunities and we need to make the most of those. Responding to that situation requires an understanding of where the real wealth, where the real resources in the area lie. Because there's a tendency to think that wealth is just about money, it's just about budgets, et cetera. Well, actually, the definition of wealth is having a plentiful supply of a desirable thing. So certainly in this district, our wealth lies in people like yourselves who are active in their communities, who have a passion for the district. It relies in our communities, it relies in our institutions, our businesses and our volunteers.
You've gone on mute again, Mark. We've lost your sound.
Okay, yeah, I think somebody must keep pressing that. And it, it, it lies, it also lies in our parks, our coastline and our countryside. But making sure that that wealth is realised depends on all of our efforts. Through lots of efforts, I think it's fair to say that a sound foundation has been laid. And in my role as leading the council as chief executive, you know, it allows me to work with elected members, with staff, with partners, with communities and with businesses to co-design and build a future that grows and makes the most of that wealth in our district, because certainly we as a council can't achieve that on our own. For my part, there are sort of eight key principles that I think are really important and that, you know, I want to instil certainly in our council, but which will also apply equally to the way that we work with partners like yourselves. So in briefly, my, my eight key principles are first of all, the first one is that of having a vision. So clarity of purpose comes from a strategic aim and supporting objectives that are agreed, understood and sustained by all involved. Now, the council's got its plan and I briefly outlined that. And I think that's, it's really helpful that we can articulate our vision as a council because, you know, for say Lancaster vision, it means that you can look at that, you can see what the vision is. You can either decide, well, we like that part of the vision and we wish to contribute towards that. Or you might say, well, the council isn't intending any outcomes in this area. So that's a gap that we wish to fill. Or you may wish to do a combination. But either way, it's important that we clearly articulate our vision. Second key principle is anticipating. So from a council's point of view, there's a need to plan ahead. We've got our key projects, we talked about Eden, Canal Quarter, et cetera. We've got our key services that we always have to deliver, things like waste collection, street cleansing, leisure, all those kinds of services. But always there are issues that emerge that need to be addressed. You know, we have increasingly weather related events. We have other emergencies. We don't know when they're going to come, but we need to plan and be ready for those so that we can work to serve our communities and so that we, we've always got resource that can be available for those, which ties into my third principle of preparedness. We, we all need to be properly prepared and clear of roles and responsibilities. So certainly from my role as head of paid service of an organisation that employs about 850 people, that's about making sure that I've got the right people in the right places with the right skills. You know, what, you know, to operate well, as we've seen during the pandemic, you know, we've got lots of good people and we, what matters to me is that it's people who've got the right attitude, the right values, the right culture. Then the, the skills that are needed to perform particular roles, they can always be developed. But what's important is that sort of ethos that runs through. It's fair to say that in, in, in my organisation, in the city council, like any big organisation, there's lots of good examples, but there are definitely areas where we can improve. There are inconsistencies in things like sort of customer service. There's some good examples of project management, but there are areas where we can improve. So what I aim to do is to make sure that good practice is embedded right the way across the organisation. The fourth point is that of subsidiarity, which is really important for a council because, you know, we've got the paid service side of things, we've got the elected member side of things. Officers, the paid service advise, members decide, there are some delegations to officers. But it's important that we get decision making at the right levels. So decisions and actions need to be taken at the lowest appropriate level with coordination at the highest necessary level. But wherever decisions are made, it's important that they're transparent, that they are accountable and that where appropriate, that community, that it's not just something that the council does, that we involve our communities, certainly in our thinking, that we engage with our communities, that we make decisions that are based on what the general view of our communities is. And also so that we can make decisions that are timely, that are efficient, which can sometimes be a problem for councils because it's a big machine and because of the, because of the political side of things and because of the office side of things. And sometimes because of the political makeup of different councils, and decision making processes can be longer than maybe in a private sector organisation. But there is sometimes a strength in that. But for me, it's about making sure that I get the balance right. The fifth thing is a really important one, especially in an age that's kind of dominated by social media and by, by vox pop. It's important that our decisions are made based on data, based on hard evidence, based on available information, rather than being based on load voices. So having accurate information and appropriate management systems are key to effectively making decisions. You know, obviously elected members will make decisions based on a number of factors. But they need, but in the start, the starting point is that we as officers need to provide the best data, the best information that they can make, then make those broader decisions on data. It is critical to understanding issues and therefore addressing them. And again, that's an area where, you know, we need to improve as an organisation. We've got some areas where we've got masses of data. We've done quite a lot of work with the university. We've employed somebody who was a student at the university doing a master's degree to help us make better use of data. Sixth area, and I suppose this is really important for, for yourselves, is that of partnership working. It's really important that we coordinate, that we work with our partners in the district because that way we'll produce a coherent, integrated effort for the district that will make sure that we gain the most of the wealth in the district. The default position when faced with a problem should be, who do we need to work with? It's not how do we as a council solve that? It should be, who do we need to work with? Who do we need to talk to? Who can help us? Who can we get a view off? And to do that, it's important we build relationships and that we act as well as a good partner. It's no use just saying, well, we want to collaborate, we want to work in partnership. We need to be and show ourselves to be a good partner as well. Which goes to the seventh point about cooperating. So flexibility, effectiveness depends on positive engagement and information sharing at all levels. So, you know, we want to have open relationships with community groups, with organisations, with our partners with whom we deliver. We need to share best practice. It's good to be able to tell stories of things that have gone really well. But I think the sign of mature relationships is when we also share the things that have gone wrong. You know, the things that have gone right, it's easy to share it, but you know, you know, things that have, you consider have gone wrong. To be able to have those conversations and understand why things have gone wrong, how they could have been done better, that certainly would help me. And it's a sign of sort of mature partnership working. And sometimes that's about, there's, there's always a natural desire to be seen as the leading light in addressing issues. But I think, as I outlined before, the, to take advantage of the, the opportunities and therefore solve the challenges requires joint efforts. It's not about who's the leading light, it's about cooperating to ensure that we're all leading lights. And then the eighth thing, and I think this is the most important for me, is that we need to be seen as a can do council. You know, we have many different roles, we deliver services. And we have a regulatory function for things like planning, environmental health, et cetera. So sometimes we have to give out sort of fairly hard and cold messages. But that doesn't mean to say that we can't do things in a can do way, in a customer friendly way. It doesn't mean to say that we can't sort of help organisations, individuals find solutions. We need to be a can do organisation and seen as being that. And sort of brings me to the final bit really, that, you know, Shackleton, the explorer said, difficulties are just things to overcome after all. So there will be many difficulties, there will be many challenges. I'm sure that as, as my relationship develops with Lancaster vision, you know, we will identify difficulties in our relationship. But by talking to each other, by openly communicating, we can always overcome these things. So hopefully I sort of set out my stall for how, you know, I intend to take things forward. Obviously quite a high level view, always happy to talk, you know, in, in later events on more specific things. But hopefully that gives you a flavour of what's to come. And I'll hand back to the chair and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, that, that was great, covered a lot of territory now. Now what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand back to our chair, John, who's joined us to chair the remainder of the meeting. So John, do you want to take over at this point?
Right, I've got my voice back. Yeah, well, first of all, I must apologise. I'm having IT problems these last few days and I've been trying to get on to, I've got two laptops and a phone all with zoom on and I couldn't get through on any of the damn things. So I've had a very frustrating evening. So I do apologise, Mark, for not being here to welcome you. I got most of your talk and it is being recorded, so I can wind back to the beginning. But I thought, I mean, I've, I've worked with you when I was with Chamber over many years. I've always found that you were open to, to talk. You were a go-to person if something needed doing. And so I welcome your appointment as CEO. You can, you come across as open and honest and straightforward. And we certainly as Lancaster Civic Vision look forward to working with you in the future. Now, I'm sure that there are going to be a number of questions. There are no hands stuck in the air at the moment. But is there anyone like to lead off? They've struck dumb in absolute amazement and admiration.
I think you get Malcolm trying to come in, John.
Malcolm. You unmute yourself, Malcolm and fire away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying. I think I'm unmuted now. Good evening, Mark. Very interesting to hear your, your outcomes and your, the, what you have got in mind in your own in the council. My background is human resources. So I'd be quite interested to understand how you see HR putting in within the objectives of the council. Because clearly the people that were able to attract the city, both in terms of the council, but in terms of entrepreneurs, in terms of GPs, where there seems to be a shortage. You know, people seem to me to be very, as I would perhaps inevitably say, are, are very central to, to what, what we can achieve. So I'd be quite interested, does HR report directly to you or how does it fit into the structure, please?
Okay, so I think, yeah, so in turn, I suppose there's two parts to that. There's the internal part and the external part. Internally, we've just, we've, we just recruited a new HR manager who's come from Chester East. I think it is Alex Kinch, he's called. All, all through my career in local government, I think there's, there's two really important people in an organisation. That's like your head of finance, your head of HR. So, and, and I, you know, I, you know, I take the view that in an organisation, nothing works without having the right people. So my view is that HR really, really important. At the moment, the, the head of HR is a bit of a technical thing, isn't a chief officer. So I can't report directly into the chief exec, but I, he, he reports into the, our monitoring officer, our head of legal. But I strategically, I sort of oversee the head of HR because I think it's that important. In terms of how we develop as an organisation, you know, naturally we have to have sort of service units because, you know, that's, you know, you've got to sort of manage the organisation efficiently and people need to know who, who they report to for day to day things. But I think the, the trick for me moving forward is that we need to be a lot more sort of cross-service working. Because a council is a very sort of diverse organisation. There's not many businesses where you've got, you've got like one end of the organisation delivering sort of, something like, say, a planning service, a regulatory service. And then you've got another end of the organisation delivering a day to day service like waste collection. So it's very diverse. And so it, it, it is really, really important to sort of keep a handle on the, on those sort of HR issues, dealing with trade unions, motivating staff. But what I want to do is have a lot more, you know, that I want to have an organisation, as I said before, where what's important is having that sort of right culture, that right attitude. And in terms of attitude, what's important to me are people who are customer focused, who recognise that they're to serve the community because that's what public service is about. And also people who have a can do attitude and also understand, you know, the sort of, the way, the ethical way that a council works. So if people have got those skills, they're the ones that, you know, I want to find a way of making sure that everyone in our organisation has the opportunity to develop. You know, I don't want people to feel that the ceiling's at different levels. If they've got those right attitudes, we want them because there's no two ways about it. In the future, the, because of the tight financial constraints within which local government is working, it's quite likely that the headcount will be less. So it's important, but what is important is we keep on attracting talent into local government. We retain talent. We retain talent in local government. But I think the other part of it is that as a major, you know, because we, we're one of the few district councils that still has the majority of our services in house. So we are a major deliverer of services. We're a major purchaser of services. So the more that we can do to build uh community wealth through procuring locally, through developing local skills, I, I'm really interested in that. A, a particular area that would give an example of that is the way that, you know, our, we've got 3,800 council houses. We've, we're doing some trials of sort of retrofitting so we can get to near carbon zero on those properties. Once we've developed that, we can then start to work with, say, Lancaster Morecambe College to bring forward young people who, uh who, who have the right trades that can either work for contractors in the area or that can work directly for us. So I'm really interested in that sort of supply chain side of things, which is, which is more about the sort of organisational development. But it's about working with, it, it's about working with the, sort of our educational partners um to, and planning ahead so that we don't get to a point where we, we struggle for, you know, people who can fit air source heat pumps or people who can drive binwagons. Because it's not just about university students in this district. It, you know, we still need, we still value people who might have come through the education system and not got all their R levels or GCSEs, whatever they are now. We, we, you know, we still value people and there's some good jobs that can be had for the council. So not just about sort of university degree jobs, it's about sort of, you know, what would have been the um either, you know, entry, exit level from school or HNCs, HNDs, et cetera. So I'm interested in following that up. Hopefully that gives a go on.
Do you, do you think the, the, the culture within the, within the council is good at the moment? And do you see that, you see that changing or is, is it going? Yeah, have you got any ambitions to, to, to change the way things are done?
I think that what, I think that what the pandemic, how we responded in the pandemic has shown what we can do. So, you know, I think we were, I think before the pandemic, we were good. We, you know, we had some really good examples of good practice. And relative, relative to other councils, you know, we, we were, we, we were good. But the pandemic, we, we moved up, I, I would say, two or three gears, you know. So, so we, during the pandemic, we reconfigured the council into sort of three um areas. One was delivering our services, business as usual. One was looking after our sort of communities. One was looking after our businesses. Now, that was thrust upon us because the government required us to do that. But the speed with which we did it and the way that we moved, say, planners into helping um look after, you know, communities or, you know, or, or people who were in maybe in HR looking after businesses, that, it was remarkable. And I think it, it showed what we could do and also the way that we then use technology so that we could work from, I, from wherever we were, from whichever council building or from home. And the way that we kept our services that couldn't be delivered from home, which probably the vast majority of our services running, was a tribute to A, the fact that we, you know, we, we were good. But B, the fact that we must have had a good culture because we had staff who, you know, we, we never missed a single bin round during the pandemic. So people don't just suddenly become motivated to change. You know, they must have been there already. But what it's shown me is that, you know, we, we, we can do so much more and we need to keep on top of that. And it's, it's difficult to sustain that when you've not got an emergency on. But, you know, you've got to, we, we've got to, we, we have to keep up that sort of momentum.
I thought, I mean, just on a, a side point, Mark, I thought the response of the council at the outset of the pandemic, as, as a small business, you know, you responded really quickly to the, to the provision of grants. Um and that, that process amazed me just how, how quick and slick it was. So, so I, I thought that was good.
Hmm. And it shows what we can do. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm. Um other, David? David Morgan, is that your hand up? Unmute yourselves, please. Sorry, no, I haven't got my hand up, but I can't see anybody else with their hands up either. Um if, if, if anyone wants to ask a question, just press that, the reactions button and put the, the hand.
There's a hand up from Howard. Um hello, Mark. That was a very enjoyable introduction to the way you see the council operating. Um I, I wondered what ideas you might have about the development of social housing in the area. And in particular to say, uh areas of, of potential like the Canal Quarter.
Um I think, I think s- social housing is obviously really important to us as a council. We are one of the few uh councils that still has its own housing revenue account. So we don't have an arm's length sort of council housing or housing association type arrangement. Um we, we've got 3,800 council properties. Um obviously because of right to buy, we used to have 7,600. Um but we have, you know, we have an acute need for good quality social housing in our district. In terms of our immediate priorities for um social housing that we're directly delivering, we have a major um project underway to redevelop uh the main ways estate. And we view that not just as a, as a housing project, it, it, we view that as a sort of place making uh project. Because, you know, that area, it's a really important area, it's well located. Um the, so that, that's, that's, that's sort of consuming a large amount of effort. And that probably be the big, I think that'll be the biggest housing project that the council has ever um delivered in, in, in one go. So that's exciting. And, you know, that's something that you might be interested in finding out more of. With regards to um some of our developments and particularly Canal Quarter, um on, on the council website at the moment, there's detailed information on where the council's up to with Canal Quarter. And so certainly housing needs to be part of uh the mix in there. And as I say, you, you, you'll see, if, if you go on the council website, there is sort of comprehensive information on the latest sort of phases on that. But yeah, I mean, the, it, it, it is an issue for the district, sort of affordable housing, social housing, but making, but trying to do it in such a way that we have a blend of tenures that are viable and that also don't risk um right to buy. Because, you know, it's a major blow to the council is in, if we invest in housing. And then um depending on where it's placed, um it, it then, it then becomes right to buy. So we are looking at other vehicles for delivering housing. So we have got a, a LAPCO, a local authority trading company set up, which once we've got some projects that are nearer to delivery, we can start to think about how, where we would place um some of our um properties um to ensure that we, you know, to ensure that, that we, we get this sort of right mixture and, and we manage risk in the right way.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Howard. Um Roger, you, you've put two questions up on the chat. Have you got some extras?
All right, I'm having terrible trouble like you with getting on to Zoom and now making it work. Um the, those are the two questions I really want to, would be interested to answer for.
Can you see the um items in chat, Mark?
Yes. So the first one is about what about encouraging heritage building trades at the College of Knowledge? So Lancaster Morecambe College, the College of Knowledge. Um yeah, i- i- if there are, i- i- I mean, there is a particular certainly in, in, certainly in Lancaster city, we know that when we have, you know, because of the and, and the various conservation areas we've got in the district, it, it is sometimes very difficult to get hold of tradespeople who can uh deliver the kind of building works that we need. So yeah, it's not just about the sort of the technological side of things, the net zero carbon side of things. If, i- if there is a requirement for um, you know, for trades that, that could work in, you know, on, on our sort of heritage type buildings, that will be something we'd be interested in uh exploring with Lancaster and Morecambe College. And the second question, what about the future of the Skirton School site? Um obviously, that's a key site in the district. It's been empty for a number of years now. We do have an interest in it because of our main ways uh redevelopment work. Uh and that's something that we are exploring with our colleagues at the County Council, who actually own the site. So we would hope in the next few months or so, we could give more detailed information on that.
Well, the county council are going to buy, uh selling the site and you're going to buy it. Are you going to pull down the school and the cherry trees in the, in the, in the full frontage?
Well, the, the cherry trees can never, we would never, ever pull the cherry trees down. Um and the, and certainly the front of the, the frontage of the site, which has got the sort of, the playing fields, the cherry trees, that, that, that can't be built on. In terms of the detail of how we would develop the site, we're not anywhere near that as yet.
Because there's plenty of room behind where the old Skirton School, primary school.
Yeah, yeah.
Build new houses on that.
Yeah.
But not on the cherry trees and the thing.
Yeah, it's, it's a very big site. It's, it's, it's a huge site when, when you start sort of, yeah.
They, with the go to the heritage building site, most of the workmen who came from the, to do the um, the castle came from Wigan and places like that. So in terms of carbon footprint, it would be far better if we had decent lead workers, oak workers, stone ma- stonemasons and so on that live locally and were trained locally by the College of Knowledge.
Yeah, uh and they are a guy, you know, as I mentioned before, they're dying trades. It's really difficult to get older people to do jobs on the town hall and in Dalton Square and places like that.
And we'll always, and we'll always need them because you've got lots of heritage buildings.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a good point.
Thank you.
Uh well, well, I hope you, you can, Sarah, that you can um keep your grandad happy. But you've just been told those cherry trees are not going to be uh.
I can rest easy now, John. That's lovely. I drive past them every day and think of him.
Good. Uh well, it's, it's a good memory, isn't it? Uh James, you've got your hand up.
Thanks, John. Mark, I, I've got an observation and, and then a question. The observation is, I, I thought it was really interesting when you were talking about your background and how you came into local government. Because people may not appreciate it, but that's really unusual these days for somebody to actually start, you know, at that level in the organisation and make the way right to the very top. And the only other individual I can think of um who's done that was a guy called Howard Bernstein at Manchester. Starts as a legal apprentice and then it's up his tubes. And I think your background can through really clearly the way you did your presentation, you approached the job. And I think that's really, really important because I think that's a great role model for every member of staff in the organisation, that basically if you work hard enough and try hard enough, regardless of where you started, you can end up at the top. So I think that's brilliant. The que- the question I've got, Mark, was about your comment about how other districts in Lancaster were envious about some of the, the positives and the assets that Lancaster has. And the reason I found that interesting was because the reality of any local authority chief executive's life is that you're constantly in competition with other local authorities for jobs and investment. I know everybody's supposed to cooperate, but it comes down to it as a great deal of cooperation as well. The question I've got is that in a situation where um you, you're not a unitary authority, you are reliant to certain extent um on the county council and also on the local enterprise partnership in terms of resources and attention. And I just wonder to what extent the actions and resource allocation of both the county and the let actually reflected the breadth of opportunities that Lancaster.
Yeah, I think that's a good question, James, because I think it, I think it's probably, probably in the past, you know, there, there's probably been thoughts that, 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 that um things in Lancashire have been very sort of Preston centric. But, but I do think particularly with, with the Eden Project and, uh, and the South Lancaster one, and, and to some extent Canal Quarter, there's this sort of realisation that, that Lancaster has a huge amount to offer and that Lancaster is probably um part of a thriving future in Lancashire. And I, and the other, the, the other really interesting thing that we, we, we need to start thinking about is the, so the National Cyber Centre is going, is setting up at Salmesbury. Um there was huge amounts of competition from Manchester for that. But that means that a major government sort of department with really sort of highly skilled and unique jobs is setting up in Salmesbury. And obviously for that, it requires lots of specialised supply chain tech businesses, which obviously Man- the Manchester region will try and respond to that. But I think in, again, in Lancaster and to some extent the, the wider Bay Area, we already have a lot of those sort of elect tech, um techie type businesses that nobody's ever heard of, but that have huge amount of influence and, you know, a big turnovers. And that have, that have been driven, I suppose, because of the university. So something that we need to be strategically thinking of is how we can make the most, build the supply chains following probably the sort of M six and M seventy four corridor. You know, so you could have sort of hubs near multiway junctions and those kind of things. So again, we, we're really well placed for that because we've got, we, we've got the people at the universities who've got those skills that are A, needed at the National Cyber Centre, B, needed in the supply chains. We have, or we will be having good quality sort of housing uh development in the district. We've got that sort of quality of life um in the district. Because there's no two ways about it. It's, you know, it's a district that most people are absolutely envious of. You know, we've got the, you know, we've got a city centre with two theatres in it. You know, we've got seaside, we've got parks, we've got absolutely everything. Um so it's an attractive place to live. So that's why I think that, you know, that's why I say that people are sort of envious of the district. Probably we're, we're fairly sort of unsung and some, part of me thinks that's a good thing. Part of me thinks it's, you know, we could do more to market ourselves. But, but I think also from a community leadership point of view and from, not just from the council's point of view, but this sort of community wealth idea, we, we, what we need to be doing is putting forward a joint narrative that says, you know, these are all the opportunities that there are in Lancaster and the Lancaster district. You know, look to invest in them. And that's not just going to benefit the Lancaster district, that will benefit the whole region. But in order to get that forward, it, it, it can't just be a narrative from the city council. It needs to be a narrative from, you know, the, from the city council, from the university, from partners that, that sort of says that we need to set out clearly what it is we want, articulate that and, and make a big voice for ourselves. Because I think there's not going to be sort of distractions in the near future about the future of local government and things like that. I think what we need to, we, we need to sort of seize the day, you know, act as a sort of virtual unitary authority, if you will. You know, the county is a massive organisation, it's huge compared with us. But, you know, the partnership working that we're doing at the moment, they recognise that we can contribute a lot because we've got a feel for the place that they don't, you know, they build roads, we build communities. Uh and there's a big difference there.
Okay, that's great, Mark. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mark. Um Anne's put a question up. Um and this is something, in fact, that the society has been involved in um with the uh council. Uh we've had um a number of conversations with Caroline Jackson, the, the leader of the council uh about the uh, the state of um areas. The problem uh being that the city is responsible for so much, the county for so much more. Um and then you get privately owned areas such as Dutchie, um the Anglican Church, if you're looking at the priory, the NHS with the, some of their buildings. Um and it's a case to, in, in many ways, of trying to shake uh a few uh people together to uh come up with uh some action. to come up with some action to tidy up the place. I mean, if you come down South Road is a good example. The old railway station there, the, the number of plants growing out of the walls at all levels, they're all weakening the building. But can we get any response out of the NHS? It's their building. Mark, I presume will have been involved at some point in being asked what we're doing about tidying, for example, Caton Road. And some work was done. And we've been told that Lancaster is being granted extra money by county for tidying the roads. But we've been waiting for a meeting to find out exactly how much and what they're going to do with it. So unless Mark wants to add something, I would suggest watch this space. We will be reporting back to you.
Well, I think that, yeah. So I just wanted to say thank you, thank you for that, John. That's very useful because it, I, I've impressed with what Marcus said, but if the whole, the visual aspect of Lancaster is as neglected as it is, it undermines a lot of what you're trying to do. And so it's frustrating that these things are privately owned partly. And I would be very happy, John, if you could report having shaken a few people into action.
So we, we will report. Do you want to comment, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's a really difficult one because it is frustrating. And, you know, as, as John's explained, there are a number of different sort of organisations that are responsible for different things. Based on the conversations that, that you've had with Caroline Jackson and Gina Dowden and others, we know that County did allocate some additional funding to public realm. And we know that they have, they've actually commissioned, they've commissioned a company to do weed spraying in the district this season. But at this point in time, we haven't got the actual details. There is a debate as to how useful and how safe weed spraying actually is. And I think that the solution is, is a difficult one. And it's one that needs a number of different, different sort of layers. Because the, you know, where, where we've got to is a manifestation of the fact that organisations, public sector organisations, don't have enough funding to do all the things that they used to be able to do. And we've got a, we've got a huge district, two hundred and twenty five square miles. You know, you, you can see from the state of pavements and things like that, that the County Council haven't got the funding to be able to point pavements, repair pavement, pavements, resurface pavements. We've got a huge amount of trees, which then shed pollen and things, which creates medium for weeds to grow. So, and that's not to make excuses, that's just to say that, that what we see is, I suppose, a symptom of years and years of municipal funding being, being sent elsewhere and councils having to prioritise. So the answer lies in, yes, the county need to do some things like weed spraying. Yes, we need to sort of make sure that our cleansing schedules, et cetera, are appropriate for areas. But I think there's also a lot of work that we can do with volunteer organisations. We've got lots of sort of friends of groups now that we're helping, lots of litter picking groups and things like that, who are only too willing to help. But we do need to do it in an organised way. And we do need to sort of look at ways we can incentivise people and gain ownership. So it, it's a difficult one. The answer isn't just about sort of berating councils, although that's the temptation. But it's certainly something we'd, we're open to further conversation on.
Right. Thanks, Mark. There's a question there from Roger. I think the biggest problem with that is who the heck do you prosecute if their flypost in the very name means that they appear, stick something up and disappear? So how on earth do you prosecute them? I don't know.
We have CCTV.
Well, again, they're moving that fast. And there's little point prosecuting people who have no assets. David, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I'm just following on what you've just been talking about. In fact, we do have a meeting fixed with Caroline and Gina for the sixth of June now. So we, we're able to press that a little bit. And, and we do understand the frustr, you know, the frustrations you have. Because, you know, a county doesn't give you the resources or doesn't respond in the right way to request the right resources. But the reason this all came about was, and to use the old phrase, you never get a second chance to make a first impression. And the, the reason it came about was, was somebody came to invest in the city and drove down to Caton Road and got to the bottom of the Caton Road and turned around to the drivers and said, turn around and take me back. I've seen enough of these places. And, and thi, this is what I, this is what we're trying to get over. We're not trying to say go round, you know, spraying weed killer here, there and everywhere and everything else. We're looking at the approaches to the city. We're looking when people come in. You're looking at a first impression, you know, and, and I say, your first impression is usually the most important. And I think that's the areas that we're not concentrating on and that we should be concentrating on. What are people coming, people coming to, to visit Eden are going to be driving in, cycling in, walking in. And this is what they're going to, and what, what, what sort of impression is that going to give of, of the home of Eden in the north?
Yeah, and I, and I think that's a fair point. And I think that, that certainly our focus that we're working with County on are those entrances, you know, the Caton Road entrance, A six entrances. That, that's certainly what would be our focus. You'll notice we've made on, on our monkey rack flower beds, we've made some sort of significant improvements down there over the last few weeks. I think the, the only caution I'd slightly provocatively add to that is that, you know, whilst there's an anecdotal story there of somebody driving down Caton Road and turning around, I, I hear lots of stories where people come to Lancaster who've never been here before and think, wow, this is a great city and I'm going to come and live here. So you can, but the point is, what, the quest, the things that you, the things that you raised are self evident, aren't they? And you, to me, having a well, you know, having a nice sort of, you know, the, when you're coming down Scottford Road and you can start to see the coastline as you head towards Spa, you know, that sells the district to me. And if we can just tidy it up a bit, if we can work with County to get those sort of, you know, the main routes, that's better than any sort of marketing brochure. So, yeah, point well made, but I would, you know, got to rebut it slightly.
That's what you're there for, Mark. Hugh, you've got your hand up.
Well, it's a, a point related to that. The, the main obstruction in so many ways to Lancaster's development is the medieval road system that we're stuck with. I realise that many of the answers will come not from Lancaster City Council because they're not the highway authority. But not so long ago, the Civic Society put forward the idea of a, a third bridge or an additional bridge over the loon, which got quite a considerable amount of support. Now, again, I realise that that would rely on national finance and County Council authority. But could we expect the City Council, who will obviously have a, be a major player, to actually support that idea to try and ease some of the congestion that the chirogery system creates?
I, I think, without being specific, I think the City Council would, is really keen to support a, a transport system that reduces the need for, you know, sort of vehicle transport as much as, for, for vehicle transport that produces CO2 emissions as much as possible, which doesn't necessarily mean to say, it, it doesn't necessarily mean to say about sort of getting cars off roads. It, it's about having the most efficient route from A to B. Because obviously the standing traffic is, you know, a major cause of CO2 emissions. So, you know, we, that, that's what our, that, that's certainly what our elected members would be keen to support. The issue of transport is a, a really interesting one because, as you say, we aren't directly responsible for transport. But how transport happens has a massive impact on the City Council. So we are working hard with the County Council to look at the, how, how the must, how the transport master plan that they're working on, how that will work, how that will link with South Lancaster. And I think that's probably a topic that you might want to consider to, to invite a colleague from possibly County Council and City Council to talk about at some point, because that could be ours in itself.
Yes, we, we have had meetings with County on, on roads. And in fact, our Lancaster Vision subgroup is also looking at the traffic master plan at the present time. So hopefully we'll produce something of interest to County and City on that. Jim Wood has got his hand up.
Just quick one. First, an observation on flyposting. If only we could stop the events that are being flyposted. Is that a possibility?
We, certainly, certainly where we've had, where we've had events and we've noticed that they've been flyposting, we've, we, I can think of several occasions where we've got on to the event organiser, if the event's taking place on our land and told them that they need to remove them post haste. But it, it depends where the, it depends whose land the event, you know, we've got a leverage there when it's on our land.
But my, my main question, Mark, is really, and it's something that colleagues have brought up earlier, any visitor Lancaster coming in, say from, from the south. Yes, it looks great when you look down at the mountains from Greaves, but once you reach the, what, I think it was the Alexandra Hotel now. And prior to that, subsequently, I think, was Revolution, you know, decrepit, broken windows. Then you go past, what was the hotel on the left, the Thwaites' pub, which I think was called the Albert. And you go through town, what do you get? But a succession of empty and neglected commercial premises, which once were very fine buildings. Where do you think we'll be in five years' time, please?
Well, I, I think, I mean, I, I think the City Centre seems to be booking the trend in that quite a lot of the premises that were sort of empty pre pandemic are now filling. You know, the, you know, BHS being a good example where it's sort of developed into three hospitality, hospitality sort of outlets. It, it seems to me that the way, and I, and I don't know whether it's sort of unique to Lancaster because we had a lot of independent retail. Anyway, it seems the way that it's developing is very much towards sort of cafes, restaurants, bars and things. Which, which will, which will obviously shift how the City Centre itself works, you know, because you've got the castle now, which you've got the, you know, the super cafe in there. So, yeah, it, it's kind of interesting. It'd be, it would be interesting to get a view, I guess, from the retail sector and, and from Lancaster bid as to how they see, whether they see that's a good thing or a bad thing. But it just, it looks to me naturally like that every time a premise becomes empty, it's been replaced with some sort of food related or drink related outlet. Which I, I suppose will, will, will head it to be more of a sort of night time, evening time economy place. And you'd hope in summer you could have a lot more sort of cafe culture, weather permitting. But it is interesting because compared with, say, Preston and some other towns, they've just got sort of outlet after outlet that's completely empty. You know, I was talking to somebody who, who comes from Bolton and that, that, you know, I've used the word before, that they were absolutely envious of our City Centre in that, you know, in, in Bolton, premises become empty and they just cannot find anybody to fill them. Whereas in Lancaster, you know, they come and spend money in the City Centre and they can see that empty premises are fast becoming full premises. But that will shift it from how it was maybe twenty or thirty years ago, where there was sort of lots of retail and, and service type businesses.
Of course, one of the big dangers at the moment is the inflation situation. People aren't going to have that sort of money to spend on extras like restaurants, pubs, drinking, et cetera.
Yeah, and what, what is interesting, we, we've been doing some, we've been doing a lot of data crunching, looking at, looking at, at movements of people. So looking at how people arrive in the city and then looking at data as to where they move around the city. And based on sort of visa spend base, which is all sort of anonymised at the high level, how much, how, how much spend goes on. So where people are drawn in from. And, and increasingly, oh, you know, it's becoming more of a sort of, a, a, a regional destination. And, and there's a significant amount of spend comes from, from London, who presumably come up on the train. But we're doing a lot of that sort of data work. So maybe, maybe in sort of six months, twelve months' time, we can come and give you a clearer picture of that. Because, you know, from, from the initial look I've had, that you, you, you kind of form a view based on your own anecdotes. And then you look at the data and it tells a completely different story.
Right. Jim, is that all right?
Thank you.
James?
Yeah, I mean, my, my question, Mark, I was asked by someone else who couldn't be here tonight to, to ask this. And it relates to a number of very fine old buildings in Morecambe. And the individual was thinking about buildings like the Liddoody Building and others. And over the last couple of years, there's been conversations between the Society and the Conservation Section about trying to get some of those buildings listed. And the response has always been pressure of work, too busy. Now, I get that. However, I think the situation has changed. And, and you spoke in your introduction, you referred to Eden. Now, we're all hoping Eden is going to happen. I, I personally think it's a really good chance of happening. But if Eden does happen, it actually means that the protection of those buildings becomes all the more important. Because first of all, it will actually generate a case to actually prove the rest of, of Morecambe. And I'm looking at it from a positive point of view. But also as land values rise, the temptation to drop a lot of those buildings is actually going to increase. And if the building isn't listed, there's very little you can do about getting notes. So I'm not really looking for an answer tonight. I'm just wondering if you could take this back in to the council and see within the light of the Eden development, whether we could have a different approach to that issue of what I'm going to term as historic buildings at risk in Morecambe. Because I do think when Eden happens, there's going to be a lot more pressure on those buildings.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take that back. It's a good point.
Right. I'm just looking at the, the chat. We've, we probably haven't got enough time and left in the night for student housing. But again, that was discussed with our other Mark on Monday, was it Monday? So in, in quite some detail. So I think, and that meet, that was recorded. So there is a record of that on our website. So if you don't mind, I won't pass that one over. Frontierland was also raised on Monday. And I know that the city are trying to put a plan forward for that area. It's a big, important patch of land on the seafront there at Morecambe. So it is critical that it is a quality development when it does come forward. I think we've probably all agreed at that. If you want to comment there, Mark?
I think you probably summed it up. I think, I think the, every, everybody, every, everybody who's got a view on Frontierland says that part of the, part of the development needs to be, you know, bed space, hotels in some shape or form. It's, you know, it's good, I think, that the City Council has, has got that land. And we now need to make the very best of it. And lots of people got lots of different views. and lots of people got lots of different views. So it's important that we sort of take into account those views. But obviously we need to come up with something that's viable as well.
Uh, good, right. Um, we've run out of hands. Um, so, and, and you've been, um, talking for well over an hour, Mark. So I think, um, we're probably, uh, a high time that we started saying thank you for, uh, your, uh, attendance tonight. Uh, we really appreciate, um, you coming along. Uh, we know you've not been in office too long, but, um, you've obviously, um, thought long and hard about the, your role. Um, we are more than happy to, to any time to, uh, work with you, um, and, and support your efforts in promoting this, uh, wonderful city of ours. Um, so can we show our appreciation, please, for, for Mark in the usual manner? Uh, everybody's muted, Mark, so they're silent claps unfortunately, but, um, we do mean them. Um, thank you very much. Um, and, uh, a good night to everyone.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thanks for inviting me and good night, everybody. Bye bye.
Thank you, Mark.